Order will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Jackie, we call the roll.
Ms. Small.
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Excused.
Mr. Crocker.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Perkovich.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, September 7, 2023.
No move.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings, and we will follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so, or some people may just have questions, and we will try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow recreational facility at 8020 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Come on up, give us your name and address, and tell us what you want to do on Tyler
Thank you so much. My name is Richard Osborne Jr., 7050 Jackson Street, Menner, Ohio. I have Chris O'Donnell with me as well, the applicant, along with me, and he can answer any of the details related to the actual business that's going in. We are proposing a pickleball indoor facility at this location at 8,000 Tyler Boulevard. We did choose, you know, this location in particular just because of the growing demand for pickleball, and we've looked for other locations in really northeast Ohio, and we feel like Menner would be a great spot.
Thank you. Do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, just like Rick said here, I think you only have to walk outside here on a nice day to know what the demand is here. And it's not only in Menner, all of Lake County, we think eastern Cuyahoga County, northern Geogee County, we could really draw. We did a little bit of market research, and people seem to be willing to drive up to even 30 minutes, or a lot of people. We think the location is appropriate, it's close to the freeway, and I think we're going to add a relatively small number of tra- a little bit of traffic, cars coming in and out, obviously. But we're proposing, you may have seen our proposed schematic, six courts. So the simple math is if there's four players on each court, that's 24 people. Obviously, you might have some people rotating in, so but on a busy time, or a tournament or something like that, you could have 36 players. Come by on a Tuesday at 1:30 in the afternoon, there might be only a few people. I don't think we're adding a tremendous amount of traffic. The property has beautiful parking, front and back. I think it's a good location, and I think it'll work out well for us.
Thank you. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Larry, anything from the administration?
Just two things. He's already touched on one of them. The administration was curious if they were going to have any tournaments at this location, and how many per year. And the other item was, will there be any retail sales of equipment to the general public or to your customers?
In terms of the tournaments, I did mention that. That would typically would be on a weekend, Saturday or Sunday, and we're envisioning maybe once every couple months, once every quarter, you know, depending on how we see demand. As far as retail sales, pretty minimal. It might be myself too much credit to call it a pro shop, but a small display of a handful of different paddles. Balls obviously get beat up, so we would have those on hand for sale. And perhaps prepackaged snacks, Gatorade, things of that nature, but no food service, restaurant type of service.
Thank you.
With the mention of the retail sales, the administration would like to have another condition added to it, limiting them to, or requiring them to be in compliance with 1161.03, which limits the grocery receipts of the retail sales to 15%. Which is standard.
Yep.
Instead of having them come back and ask for that, would this add to this conditional use permit?
Anything from the commission members? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Crocker.
Is this going to be a membership-type business, or is it just walking off the street?
Well, we're envisioning a sort of a hybrid. In other words, you want to become a member, you'd have a yearly membership fee that would give you benefits such as lower court fees, longer advance time where you can reserve a court, lower fees on some of the programmings and lessons and coaching. But if you just want to come in once a week, once a month, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you. Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the four conditions, the fourth being retail sales, if any, will be per, is it 1161.03?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second on the agenda, we have a conditional use permit to allow an automobile repair shop at 7515 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Come on up, give us your name, tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
My name's Nick 49461, Kenwood Road. I'm with Cross Development. We're the developer on the project slash potential buyer. We're proposing a auto repair facility at 7515 Tyler Boulevard. It's currently a vacant lot, zoned, M1, light industrial. We're proposing a 12,100 square foot auto repair facility. As you can see, we've got the main drive coming off of Tyler Boulevard, and got 12 customer parks there in the front. That front portion of the building is, you know, the lobby entrance area, and then some offices. And then the rear portion is the shop area. There's a gate at the front corner of the building there that closes off, you know, after business hours every day. Behind there is where the employees park, and then also where their store, the cars that are being currently serviced. Some more details about the site, proposing two storm detention ponds, one in the front there, and then one in the rear as well. Got, you know, landscaping all throughout the site. Got the HVAC units on the side of the building, off the roof, those will be screened. Rear of the building there, you'll see a detail bay where they clean the cars once they're finished up. I think that's pretty much it as far as the project. Tell you a little bit more about the user. It's Caliber Collision. They're one of the largest auto repair facilities in the country. Got over 1,500 locations. It's roughly about 15 employees. They roughly six customers a day. That includes one to two drop-offs, one to two pickups, and then one to two estimates. As far as the work, it's, you know, auto repair. It's pretty minor in nature. It's more of repair, or I'm sorry, replacing, repair and replace in today's environment. No more of the loud banging. Some of that includes fenders, bumpers, hood, dent repair, hail damage, auto glass replacement, some framework. And then all their locations do have isolated paint booths inside. This location will definitely have one, potentially two. And then, as far as the work being completed, that's all within closed doors. Like I mentioned, it's got AC. All the doors are shut during operating hours. It eliminates any noise or anything like that. I think that pretty much covers the project. Happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay, just hold tight. Is anybody wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against us? Please come, please come up, give us your name and address.
Robert in April Conside, and we own the property next door, car repair.
Could you spell that last name? Go ahead and address your questions here.
Oh, sorry. Is it going to be auto repair, or is it bodywork?
Does he have anything else?
Well, drainage. Our property sits a little lower than this property, I would say, 7525 Light Hill. Rated back towards the building, parking lot. Doesn't run off into ours. Curious as to that. Also, is there going to be a fence along that side?
Stops near the rear of the. You got to speak right into the mic, too.
She's curious about the drainage from this property. We're concerned because we have a sump in our sewer, because we're at the tail end of the sanitary sewer line. Right at the corner of that, by Tyler and by the property, which is an electrical box, possibly hitting that. Looking at the other print for the pickleball court. This one
All right. We'll try to get those answers. Thank you. Is anybody else wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Could the applicant come back up? Did you hear those questions?
I did.
So you got auto repair, some drainage, and I'm going to address the fence with you, so.
Okay. Yeah, so as far as the work, it's just strictly bodywork. And as I mentioned, we've got the paint booth for painting, no engine work involved at this location. As far as the storm, as I mentioned, we have a pond in front, and then a pond in the rear. You know, our engineer hasn't designed the site yet, but we always meet city code, we'll meet whatever the engineer requires. Typically, the building will be raised a little bit, but we'll design, drain into those ponds. Storm pipe, we'll take it elsewhere. Last question was fence. You know, I think we've got a comment here by vinyl or wood. We'll be providing a vinyl fence, a six-foot white fence, wrapping around the perimeter of the property there to screen the parking in the rear. Yeah, I mean, we found that, you know, the white vinyl is the next best option, maintenance.
Thank you. Larry, anything from the administration?
The only thing is concerning the fence, the code requires a middle eight-foot-high fence for storage yards.
Yeah, I mean, if that's something that city code requires, we can, we can meet that. You know, I think we've typically, six feet would be the only comment that I make, pretty much out of all of our locations. We, I think, have had one location that has eight foot. I don't think we were able to consider it, but I think it's a little bit over by eight feet. I mean.
I mean, our code, 1161.04, is eight feet.
Okay. But yeah, that's what we'll do.
And then this, we'll do the site plan later, but that's where all the grading will take care of, and of all the storm work and all that.
Correct.
Yeah. So this is just an automotive portion of this.
Okay.
Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the four conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. So let's jump with the new business here and have him back up here. We have a preliminary site plan of an automobile repair shop at 7515 Tyler Boulevard. So now tell us a little bit about the site, address the drainage a little bit more, and we're going to give you some feedback on your building.
Okay. Yeah. As mentioned before, it's currently a vacant lot. Have the main access drive coming off of Tyler Boulevard. Turn in right, you've got the customer parks. You've got 12 total parks, two handicap stalls. I've got the main entrance in the front of the building, including the office. And then there at the bottom corner of the building is where there's a sliding gate, and that's where the fence starts. As mentioned, that'll be locked during all business hours by the Knox box if the fire department needs it, which is typical. Then in the rear there, we have 60 parks total. Got landscape islands, meeting code, and have the trash enclosure all the way to the rear, straight back. And as mentioned previously, we've got the HVAC units on the side of the building. Those will be screened as well with access gates to enter. And then, as far as storm, got the storm pond, bottom corner of the site there, and then in the rear as well. We haven't, you know, breached engineering the site yet, but probably dug into it and talked to the city, and unlikely it'll, it'll stay what's proposed. And then the rear split drainage
Is that all?
Yeah. And I mean, I didn't mention fence. We just talked about that, but we'll, you know, the eight-foot white vinyl fence that, the rear parking.
All right. Larry, anything?
The only thing would be on the architecturals, and you had mentioned you wanted to get into that.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention the two stacks here. My colleague is not here tonight, but we, we screen everything on the roof. So I think you got to come, when you come back for your architectural, come up with some screening.
Yeah, and we've already got that motion. I think the, the way they do it is more be horizontal, horizontal if I understand it correctly, and then they'll provide screening around it. So we'll have those screened. I think there are a couple items that we need to work through, planning department with. Already started working on our updated elevations, providing stone on the outside of the building. There is a material that we'd like to propose. It's called a structural rock panel. It's an architectural panel. It looks just like stucco. You know, we use it on, every city's accepted it that we use it. In my opinion, really better product than your traditional stucco. It's less maintenance, it lasts longer, it looks just as good, if not better. Happy to provide samples of that as we work through the process. But definitely have some ideas and plan on.
Okay.
Looking more at the next.
Thank you. Larry?
The only other thing that I would note is the south or front elevation. Part of the design guidelines should have more masonry on it than it does. It's a standard for all of our industrial buildings, as you all are aware. We make them do as much brick or stonework as we can get. They could beef up what they have presented to us. Per their calculations, it's 51% EFS on the front elevation, 30% is masonry. Everything else is doors, trims, things like that. So I think they could increase what they've given us on that elevation.
Okay. What was that on the, which elevation was that on?
The south or front elevation.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. When you go up and down Tyler Boulevard, if you pay attention, you'll see how much brick is up and down that road. We're a city of brick.
Right. You know, the one, and we don't have to get into it tonight, but the one thing I talked to the planning department about as well is the, I'm trying to get my bearing on this site, but the site that's going to be, or the side that's going to be fenced in, I know your guys' code calls for more than 50% metal panel, and then the rest, you know, stone or brick. With providing an eight-foot fence, you know, we were going to propose the architectural panel and just have all stucco. Since you can't see that side, I'd like to propose that if, nobody's going to see it, so I think it, provide more than that, but.
If you'd like to submit a, submit the elevations to us before you make application, we can take a look at it and provide you some feedback. Even sometimes, if you get us, give us an artist's rendering showing the vinyl fence and what it's going to look like, that will help us evaluate it.
Yeah, that's all I have. Appreciate your guys' time.
That's great. Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the 13 conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. We'll entertain a motion to remove, I'm sorry, number three and number four are to remain on the table. I'll entertain a motion to remove number five from the table.
No move.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. So we have a conditional use permit to allow a car wash, Clean Express Auto Wash at 7796 Munson Road. Is that applicant here? Come on up, give us your name and address. Continue the dialogue of the car wash.
Hello there. My name is Jeff Plots. I'm with Neffen Associates.
Joe Bertucci with Clean Express Auto Wash.
Since we last visited you, we've, we've made some site adjustments, hopefully cleared up a couple of answers to some of the questions that were raised. You know, we still have some, some, I guess, some dialogue to have, in particular to your, your item number four that's on the conditional use. I believe it's number four. Again, is asking for the, a change in the cross-access easement with the Sheetz property to eliminate the access at the north. You know, based on that comment, what we've done was we've extended the island up at the north to help queue cars. We've added a, some striping and a stop sign and a stop bar to hopefully control traffic at that location. So we've, we've tried to, tried to kind of work with that the best we can. Again, Sheetz isn't going to grant us the removal of this, this access easement between the properties. I think that's, as far as the conditional uses, that's really the only one that we have, have some dialogue about. We did come back with the, the island between the two properties, which we've widened it up, we've shortened the stalls, shortened the drive lane. We've created a, we had a cross-section which we drew up through there, allowing a little bit of space. We have a 36-inch-high black decorative fence. And then we also have some renderings which you brought forward so that you can kind of better understand the whole site itself. Based on that, that's, that's what, I mean, we open up some dialogue now.
Okay.
Larry, anything from administration?
Just the conditions that are listed in the report.
Anything from the commission members? So you're saying number four is a non-starter?
I direct conversations with Sheetz and their attorney, yes. And it's, and I said, is it no matter the use? They said, it's not your use. We will never eliminate our access, access points or access to the light at Munson for anybody.
Based on what you've done, I'm only speaking for myself, I think you're directing traffic in the right way. I think this works, based on our conversation that we had the last time you were here. So I don't speak for all, but I'm, I guess I'm okay with eliminating condition number four, based on the design you came forth with. Now, I, like I said, I'd like to get the input of others here, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkovich.
I would agree with you on that, number four. I think if, if we start to force people coming cross-access only from the south in order to get to Munson, they've got to travel up through the vacuum bays, the parking spots, and I think that's an even worse situation than the possible stacking or at a red light there. And I see with this additional landscape island, they've added signage, painting the stop sign, excuse me, the stop line. I think all that's going to help mitigate the problem that we're sort of thinking it might happen. But I think forcing everybody through the south is, is a worse scenario.
I do, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crocker.
Just to clarify, the, the other item that we were looking at was the, the vacuum parking spots. And so you did move the vacuum parking spots, I think, 1, 2, 3, 4, four spots that, that are just everyday parking, but not vacuum in the front there, to kind of bring that back and kind of get it out of the, the line of sight.
Yes, sir. Yeah, those first spaces are employee spaces, and the first vac starts in line with the building.
Thank you.
Also added additional employee based on some comments last time, so there's, there's additional employee parking.
Thank you. John? Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the three conditions, fourth being struck.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. So we have a building addition, site alteration, Clean Express Auto Wash, 7796 Munson Road. Tell us a little bit about your building and site alterations.
Chairman, I think that might still be on the table.
That's right. I need a motion to remove number six from the table.
So moved. Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Thanks. Floor is yours.
Again, you know, just going back to a few things we mentioned just, just previously, reflecting back to our conversation we had a couple weeks back, in particular, building elevations. I don't know if you can flip to that slide, the, the front elevation in particular. We've made some adjustments. There. So we've, we've kind of looked at some of the architectural there. The doors now match our appropriate height. We've taken that top window and kind of kept it coming across so it didn't look misplaced, the, the windows we had there. So we kind, we cleaned those up, and other than that, it's, it's remained the same. But at least we've, we've kind of looked at that and made those, the small adjustments to the elevation. The remainder of the building will remain the same, where we remove the pharmacy. It'll be filled in with, with brick. As far as the site goes, we've, again, we've made some, some changes based on the comments with the labeling the vacuums, the stalls, bringing them behind the, the building line. So now you know how many stalls are, are there. We've labeled the number inside. We've, we've actually added a little bit of extra landscaping now on the, the eastern side of the site where the, the fence is. And the addition of the, the island up front. There you go. We've had some, some green arborvitae there. I'll dampen it a little. I think that generally covers it all. We, again, we've moved the parking stalls, we put the four, we've added additional employee parking, but kept the handicap. I think that's, I think that, that covers most of the changes.
Thank you. Larry, anything from the administration?
Just the standard conditions that are listed.
All right. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman. Question on the fence that you're putting up, a couple things. Will the vacuums be on the inside of the fence? Are they part of the fence? And then, when you say decorative black fence, are you talking just an aluminum one, or what are you thinking?
So we did submit a small section of that. I don't know if you can possibly flip to the section which we, we submitted. It'll be 36-inch-high black aluminum fence. There, there, it's brought up there.
It will be located within, so there's a landscape island, so that will be within the landscape island. So there's a six-inch curb on the Sheetz side, then the fence. And our vacuums actually go on our parking spaces. So addition to that, you have another six-inch curb, then you have our vacuum posts, and then the space. So it will be within a full island with six-inch curbs on either side.
Thank you.
I do think there's like actually a section of that which we drew, so.
So, I did bring a sample, we did, I did send, but it's samples probably better telling you what actually color is. I brought few, I circled it there. So I think it's going to be really better for, it's, it's gonna be compatible with the surrounding that is right now. Brick, it's close to brick color. It's warm, it's soothing. It's the colors I circled. The front of the building will be, it will not be grayish, it will be more tan color, and then other three sides of the building is going to be that warm color.
Larry, anything from the administration?
The new color, after I looked at it today, is more of a brick color matching closer to the surrounding buildings, especially the buildings across the street. The administration would still like to see, the current building right now is beige on the top, green in the middle, beige on the bottom. We would still like to see some additional color to break up that overall look. Accent color could be the gray at the top, the gray at the, something just to, so you don't have this red solid look, which can kind of get more flat and take away some of the details of the building.
Would you like to?
Because the side of the building that's facing the street, Tyler Boulevard, it's, how many, I'm not sure how many windows and doors. There is a lot of windows and doors that's going to break up that red color. They're black-framed with tinted windows, so that's going to be that breaking color there.
What about the other sides?
Other sides, it's a playground. Everything, it's a playground, and it's fenced in in a white fence. So you, you think if we, let's say, put that accent color, could we just extend the front of the building as a stripe through the building? Is that something you're looking, you think is going to look better?
Ultimately, that's going to really be up to the commission if that's, you know, we were kind of hoping Mr. Varga would have been here, he'd have some opinions on this. It's just, we're just looking to get it to be broken up a little bit more instead of this one. We've seen buildings painted one solid color, and they're not the best-looking buildings out there. You lose something to that, and you want your business to stand out. And by painting it flat like that, one color, you're losing dimension, and it could get lost. So by having accent, an accent panel around the top, where the beige is now, or just something to kind of break it up, to bring more attention to it, might be helpful. That's why the staff report kind of recommended you may want to get with an architect or something that could help guide you as to, you know, the proper way to do it, so your business is seen and not hidden. But once again, it's really up to the commission as to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, let's get. Mr. Perkovich.
Just a quick comment here. The building itself, we really have, in its existing condition, has the top and the bottom band the same color. This middle color, which is the green, is that, I'm going to say, the third component. We've got top, bottom, and middle, where the samples that they just handed out, you know, this packet is kind of a three-color scheme. You've got that warm-up color that she wants to paint the building, but it also has that beige trim and that accent color. I mean, it would be nice just to even use those three colors. That dark could be the base, that warm-up color would be your body, the main portion in the center, and then the top could be that trim. I mean, we might even just say, hey, could you do a rendering with those three colors, and it might be just fine. That's just a thought.
Thank you. Anything else? Do you have any?
We open to any suggestions. You guys know the Mentor. I mean, we are here for 20 years already, so open to anything, any suggestions, we're ready.
Are you looking to get this painted this season?
Hopefully. Hopefully, that's the last thing left on a building to be done. Everything else, it's done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, based on what Mr. Perkovich said, do you think that we could come up with something?
Definitely, yeah. Of course.
Do you want to try to do it right now, or do we want to table this? I mean, I'd.
Mr. Chairman, I.
Yeah, Mr. Perkovich.
I think what they've done in the original submission, which they sort of probably digitally added this color to these photographs, they could do the same thing. We'll just table it this evening with the understanding that these three colors could possibly be used and just, you know, mock up a new rendering and send it to the administration just to get their feedback on it. And I think that would go a long way to convincing us, you know, what the building would look like ultimately.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
So we, we wouldn't table it? We'd approve it with these three colors to be sent to the planning department for final approval? Joe, do you want to weigh in on this? Can this happen this way?
Yes, it can happen that way. If there's some hiccups, though, it has to come back.
Okay, I'd be okay with that. Are we good? Am I getting, okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Conditions, a motion to approve. We have to approve this color palette, don't we?
Yeah, the color.
Good call.
Let's throw some conditions on here. One for the color palette, and another one to work with administration for approval, knowing that if it doesn't go, that they could come back to planning. So I don't know how that, the second one's going to get worded.
Let's see.
But I know the guy that can word it.
So, so the first condition would be, colors are approved per the palette submitted during the course of the meeting. We'll mark that as Exhibit A, and the clerk can keep, assistant clerk can keep that on file. The second condition is to, for the applicant to coordinate with the administration, and if either party has issues or concerns, matter will be referred back to the planning commission for final decision.
Great.
And make that motion. I can't repeat that. Couldn't get it fast enough.
Second, Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry, anything from the administration?
Nothing really, except I defer to my colleague on the right.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.[1675.58]